The rest. Okay. We're probably. Uh, we're in the city council at work. And we'll have the pledge allegiance. All right, we made us in the pledge.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We will see you there for at least a change. One fiction. Can you get some more? We're ready to be just.
Thank you. I mean. Uh, all right. Um.
Thompson. Dan Summerin, Thompson, Dan Blackham, Elkin, Flannam, Nanner.
Yes, here.
All right.
Who's been calling for it? Okay, um, and we don't. Two minutes until the next meeting, the first one. So we're waiting to agenda and we will have, we have time for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? If it's related to the liquor operating licenses. We'll put you on a little bit later.
It is.
Okay, then you, we can. Pick that up at the proper time. It was on the agenda. Um. Is there any public comment? Are there any public comments? We have a request for, I am too, is a request for proposal. Uh, for waste and recycling services. I think our contract is up with the DICK. This fall.
Yep.
With vitamins. And it's at least reasonable procedures to. Do that every couple of years, so.
Yep, and Recycling Committee asked that this be brought forward, um, to look at, to see. Potentially finding a provider that offers recycling services also, and. I guess for any at Recycling Committee.
It's always good to check. Are, are negotiating with vitamins, yeah, so, okay.
Yes, well.
Motion first that we accept this, someone's taking the reason.
I would like to see.
Let's.
Okay, uh, discussion, yes.
So I make a motion that we, uh, issue a request for proposals for waste and recycling services.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made second to, uh, present an RFP for waste and recycling services. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, there's lots of question marks on here for dates too, so we'll have to decide all of that.
Okay.
So something that I would like to be, uh, included in this. That the vendor uses the whole county recycling center.
I believe that's in here. It says use Polk County recycling as drop off for recyclable materials, and I think it says it twice in here. It said it on the bottom of the first page, and I think it said it somewhere else also.
Oh, yes.
Yep. It says it on the third page also.
So also just, um, an update that. In the twenty twenty five whole county budget. Will be. Uh, a new charge. Twenty five, excuse me. Thirty dollars per approved parcel, which means. That doesn't include hunting land or farm land or anything. A thirty dollar charge recycling. What that is, is every single county in the state of Wisconsin has been doing this for years and years. Polk County is the only county in Wisconsin. What this will do is this will, uh, enable the recycling to be removed from the general fund. Become an enterprise fund, become self-sufficient, not use any of the tax levying. We have about three hundred thousand dollars. Tax levy and also over the course of a couple of years will, um. Uh, uh, raise enough money. For the equipment portion of the Polk County Recycling Center update, so that hasn't been updated for thirty-five years. Now they're doing a construction building portion of it. This will finance the equipment portion of it. It will, uh, permit the county to go to single screen recycling. Which has been enthusiastically supported by, uh, local garbage haulers, uh, clean water and sanitation. And it will become, uh, a self, uh. Uh, sustainable, uh, business type of enterprise fund. No longer relying on tax levy. And tentatively, there is a little, some discussion about perhaps that freedom levy could be used maybe for public safety. The county board hasn't decided that yet. So the thirty dollar a year fee for, uh, recycling is middle of the road of what the other counties in the state has spent on charge. Some of them charge a lot more than that, some of them charge a little bit less than that. So, um, it sounds like a win-win situation. Uh, in that it will help finance some other, uh, really very needed things. It will improve services to customers. There's gonna be more, uh, recycling available as far as the dance and everything. And containers, the business people in that business are supporting it. So I. This happened last night, so I just, um, as long as we're talking about recycling, I'll just put that hat on for a minute and relay that information.
More to come, right?
Yeah, you're always in.
Uh. I guess what, what is pushing out with, uh, taxing unimproved? Since a lot of our. Unimproved land is worth maybe hundreds that, that's set on someone.
Well, because, um, for example, like a farmer who has a bunch of forties for farming. Is he generating garbage that's gonna go to the recycling bin from that personal land? He's not. He's generating it from the house and the barn and, you know, the buildings that they live. Yeah, some people, um, you know, who's, where the recycling's being generated is from residents, residential. Um, you know, it, it will include, you know, lake homes. You know, but it will, it will not include.
Five thirty acres for hunting land?
No farmland, no hunting land. Uh, if there's no improvement on the land, it won't have.
Is there an option for opting out of it?
No.
So. We can't fix our loans. But they can tax us another thirty bucks for recycling. That's, um, don't seem fair.
Well, you haven't been doing it, you know, like everybody else is.
I love your comments. Well, there's a lot of question marks on this.
I was gonna say, pick some dates.
That contract goes through when?
So it started on October first of two years ago, so it. That was the quarter that it began, so it runs through the end of September, basically.
Start date would be October first.
Yep.
This year, which is the last question, correct?
Yep.
Backward from there.
Mm-hmm.
So, is this something that we're wanting to get out right away?
I would say we probably wanna get it out right away, cause it's gonna have to have time to be voted on and gotten back to. Right. So that we can notify residents also. So, I guess. How long would you like it out there for an RFP? Do you want? Two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
I'd say thirty days.
Okay. So a month? Okay. Mm-hmm, so basically the middle of July.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, any other discussion? Motion's made in second to, uh, for RFPs for waste and recycling. I will speak.
Still other question marks.
There's still a question mark. My meaningful comment, though.
So.
Is not taking notes.
It was, um, do we want a deadline for questions, or do we think that questions can be asked and tell, like? I guess, do you wanna have a deadline for when they can ask questions? Do you want an evaluation period listed? Do you want a vendor selection and notification period listed? Do you think you need any of that, or? Is that stuff that we just feel can be eliminated?
So. If the vendor has questions about the, about the RFP, who's gonna answer those?
I guess me.
Okay, are you comfortable doing it?
I will, and if I, if I don't have an answer to the question, I'll figure out who does, basically. That's, that's usually my go-to.
I don't. I'm trying to treat it different than the other RFPs that we put out, is.
I don't know if the other ones, I don't think the other ones had like evaluation periods, vendor selection or notification, things like that in them. Um, the issuance date, I can issue it as of, like tomorrow, whatever tomorrow's date would be. The twentieth. So it'd be six twenty of twenty-four, and we can have it go through seven twenty?
Seven twenties a Saturday, so you could do seven nineteen or seven twenty-two.
We'll go with seven twenty-two, since the next council meeting won't be into August anyways. That'll still give us time to get it into a packet.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
If there's any questions, would that be anything during the study day?
That's what I feel that we could probably just eliminate that.
I see why we, why we would treat this RFP different than any of the other stuff we've done.
Well, and then for the evaluation period, we could just put that it'll be reviewed at the first council meeting in August. Okay.
Cause they won't be awarded until the end of September, so.
Well.
So you have to, you have to let them know before they know, they come in tomorrow.
Then August probably, so that.
We change hands till September first base, or October first, I mean, yeah.
As I say, after the first billing is done of it, but just so we have time to notify residents, we would wanna decide on it in August, so. Okay, I mean.
Points. Do you have anything else, Taylor?
I don't think so.
Okay. If we're doing. Uh. Motion in the second. Always in favor signify by. Saying aye. Aye, opposed, so ordered. Item number three, approval of liquor, tobacco, and operator license, Taylor. Here.
Yeah, so in your packet was a list of all of the liquor licenses that were published in the paper for notification of the people that had applied. They're all renewals. So they were all people that had these licenses last year. So it is the renewal of them. They had to fill out a full packet, but it is considered a renewal still. Also in the packet is the cigarette licenses that were applied for, the tobacco licenses that were applied for. They are all existing ones also. Um, be stop and shop as moving locations, but they're doing it between the licensing period, so they only need to be licensed at their new location now. Um, because of their transition time. And then also in there is a list of the operators that were submitted to the city. And all of the operators have been reviewed by Dan and checked off to make sure that they meet all of the qualifications. The agents have been checked off and the businesses have been checked. So I guess. Per ordinance, it says that the council approves the operators. But in our ordinance, it also says that they're issued by the council, but in our ordinance, it also says that they're issued by the clerk. So would you like to? Approve this list, and then I guess going forward through the rest of the year, do you just want me and Dan to check off on them, or do you want me to bring every operator back? That comes in throughout the year. That's one question I have.
So it was yours to accept that, like. Eighteen ninety-two, the council gave the authority to issue operators licenses. To the clerk provided they had the applicable statutory requirements to do that.
Well, and that's.
Something change.
Well, I, I didn't seem to read both ways, cause it still talks about the council and it talks about the clerk. So I figured I'd send them through you guys for the whole lump sum of them, so you're aware of. Who's out there, and then if you guys are okay with it, I can handle them for the rest of the year.
So I think when we have the license renewals, like we're doing now for the businesses. That would be appropriate to send those names through at the same time. Evaluation license and then. For the next two-year period.
One-year period?
One-year period, then, uh, I don't think that they would.
I was gonna say.
In my interpretation, you wouldn't have to come to the council.
What license are in China prepared to come up with alcohol or liquor or the?
The operator.
Alcohol, like, when you issue the alcohol, the sales licenses to the businesses.
Well, th- those are done annually through the council. It's just the operator, the actual.
And so, so it would be appropriate to have the operators at the same time, but. Anything after that. Like, you know, which is a thing, I, I mean, why would you share a liquor license to somebody that doesn't have anybody working for him, or doesn't have any, you know, I mean, that. Defeats the purpose, I would think, so. So I think you're good with what you got.
Okay. And then going forward, the rest of the year, the operators, me and Dan will just check off on them and issue them.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'm planning to look at our liquor ordinance.
Well, it sounds like it just needs to be tuned up to be.
Yes, yeah, there's, there's a variety of things in it that could probably use some examination.
Yeah.
So.
Is there a motion approved?
Do we need to allow Sally to speak?
After. Of the motion.
Well, uh, for clarification, um, in chain of orders. I would like to ask that we approve the tobacco individually, the operators individually, the alcohol licenses. Each one of those by an individual motion.
Okay. I'd like to stick to the first. Hatted going.
So three motions off.
Okay.
We can do that. All right, so.
Motion, but to be honest, I think, uh, please.
At the top of the list, um, just a second, Mike, uh, that is a valid point. Sally, you had something to, to. Add, and this is, after, I, if we make the motion, then we're gonna vote you up or down. This way we, you know, whatever we have for information. I think it's appropriate to do that now.
Thank you. This is not a plea for the license, because I've applied last year. And I wrote a letter and I. And Ron Anderson and I explained, uh, what we were going to do downtown. We followed through. Uh, we followed through after, uh, we were denied the, uh, full liquor license, and we still followed through with our business plan. And I've been open for six months. And so my question today is for myself and anybody that applied for license last year. That, um, and for the public, we have questions about how you go about deciding and renewing the license. And such as in my case, I'm asking for a full liquor license opportunity at this point. Um, in various reasons, and mostly the reason is that the liquor license that was given to the engine, I mean. This is not a personal, this is all business, so, um, I'm totally excited about everything in Amorya, all the. For all the time, thirty-five years I've lived here, so. Um, but in this particular case. Um, the license went unused and is only being used for. Maybe twenty days. They're open four days a week right now. They gave a PowerPoint presentation to all of you. You decided and voted toward it. They didn't do, they didn't follow through on what they said they were going to do. And so you were left with that decision until just recently, and that's the way we, I look at it, and that's probably the way the public looks, looks at this. And so how do we go? How does this go forward? Um, I am going to ask for the liquor license, because, um. We've, we renovated a cornerstone building. As you can see, uh, opens, and I've been open six months, whereas. The bigger, uh, business, the business that you actually gave the license to just opened recently. And so that is my question. Is it how can, um? You know, how can you give a license to, to somebody that's not really been operating under that license and, and also plead to you, plead to you with a PowerPoint presentation? That they would be opening in September, which is totally exciting. Last, that was last year, and we could have all built on that, but they've taken the whole year. So I, I have a hard time understanding it, so we'll probably need some questions or, or answers here.
I guess, can I start speaking to the statutory part of it and the ordinance portion of it? So. Unfortunately, you can't actually apply for a full liquor license at this point, because we do not have one available. All of the liquor licenses that were noticed for the full ones were considered a renewal. And the way it's works is if a business is up for renewal, basically they hold that license for the renewal. And the city doesn't actually have it back to give out to whoever they want. It stays with the business as the renewal portion of it. So it doesn't actually go back to the city to decide next year who they're gonna give them to. It's a renewal process of the business keeping the license. So in this case, if this, if the city were to have gone after the license, they would have had to have done it already. We can't not renew this license, because we have not gone through any of the public hearing. We don't have. At this point, we don't actually have a reason to not renew the license. Our ordinance reads, I believe it's that the business has to operate for a hundred and fifty days a year, which I understand that that did not happen in the past year. But nothing has been done. About it while that was happening, and at this point, the business is operating. The only other way for the city to look into revoking their license is to follow our ordinance, which states that there are certain things that if they do them wrong. They have a point system that would go against them, and then the city can look at it. In the case of last year with the farm table, it was because they had vacated the premise and they didn't have a premise, which is why it was brought up. But in this case, they are an operating business, so we can't actually do anything but renew their license. If something were to change in the future, the city can reassess the, the situation, but at this point, we do have to renew the liquor licenses that were previously issued.
Thank you for all that information, Taylor.
Yeah.
Um, I think when I come in here, you know, and I'm a new, um, license, I'm trying to get a license, and I come in. To the city hall and I ask for information. You're giving out a lot of information right now, but when I've stepped in here, I haven't received this type of information. Now, I'm, need to be able to talk, and so that's what happened last year. When I wasn't, um, I was not told that I needed to put together a PowerPoint presentation, wasn't told, I, I, I was told that I had to write you a letter and. Tell you my plan, and I did that, and I would say that, uh, the, the, the people here, um. Did not inform me that I needed to be here that night, and so I assumed that it was already voted on before I got here. So rather than me not coming here, and I had already supplied you with all the information about what Ron was going to do with the building and what I was going to do. Um, with the business, I was not, I, I was exempted because, um. Because they did not tell me, I'm, I'm gonna put the blame where it is. They, they omitted me out of that situation, otherwise why would I not be here? I mean, I. To, it was something I was after, and it was, I have no reason to, I, I do what I say. I have a business in town for twenty-four years. I have another business that I've built together and opened on time. And I don't even understand this, uh, your, the liquor license. Um. Process here, so I think that you need to give people, when they come in and ask for information, that you actually need to give us that information, because. You, that's, that's your business.
Well, and we've been working very hard to try and keep people informed, cause we've received a lot of questions about the situation. I apologize for.
You know, lost the license. I have over an apology, so.
You, since you never.
Right.
You know.
So I apologize if you don't feel like you received adequate information last year. We don't actually have a procedure for saying that somebody has to put together a letter, presentation. There is no set way to apply for a liquor license other than the application itself. There is no other standard procedure for how we move forward from there. Ultimately, it is up to the council. The council did review all of the applications that were provided last year, and then they made the decision. Thank you.
Is that it? I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I feel, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sally.
I may as well, I see a lot of comments out in the community about the situation. I, I was not on the city council at that time, and neither was I. employee at that time. There's a lot of misinformation out there about how liquor licensing works. And it is, uh, very strictly and tightly regulated. By state statute and to all, uh, uh. A liquor license that's a renewal has a lot of legal implications where. That entity can come back and sue the city for not renewing it. So it's, it's a very complicated thing that Taber League and the Council is an extremely powerful lobbying group. And I would say about nine percent of liquor licensing law in Wisconsin, they have, uh, quite a bit of influence over, and it doesn't change a lot. Um, and that's not to make any excuse Sally for, you know, how. Um, people who weren't given enough information or anything at all, uh, like that, but it. There's a lot more to it than what people, uh, on social media and around town are. Are talking about, and it's, uh, tightly regulated in their chapter one twenty-five of the Wisconsin statutes.
So how does a license come available?
So we have quotas in Wisconsin for the big, the class B license. And, and when reserved, can, that license isn't gonna become available unless someone goes out of business or they commit. Liquor-related offenses that make them ineligible by ordinance or by statute. And then there is a legal process that the village attorney would conduct. In order to revoke the license or suspend the license, and at that time, that license would become available.
Um, I'm gonna stop the debate on this, say, I'm, not that you can't talk about it and find out all those things, but it's probably not appropriate for, uh, center of the council.
Just one question. Years ago, we ran out of rotation. On the, when the golf club and I think, uh, that dude, then they got club license. There was, uh, I believe our school had a sports bar race. The golf course had a club license, and they wanted to.
Yes, we have. Since we'll be able to, uh, time, I, I certainly can take those things up.
Well, that might be something to be, I don't even know.
It, it's, no.
Such thing.
No.
Uh, um. I want, if, if, you know, Sally, I wouldn't recommend, you know, coming and docking on a one-on-one, just not necessarily in the council meeting, okay? We're not limited to what we can do for, that, don't for sure. All right, now we entertain a motion.
I make motion to approve the operator's license as listed and submitted.
Okay, second.
It's operator's licenses, okay.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
May the motion, secondly, we approve the operator's license as listed. Significant list, you can see. Which was published, any, any further questions?
Operators aren't published in the paper, just the liquor has to be.
Any further questions?
While we're on the subject, I would like to ask Taylor if a procedure can be developed for future. Uh, liquor license applicants to follow.
Let's hold it. So that we're talking about opera, you're talking about operators, now you're talking about licenses, right?
Right.
All right, motion made in second to approve the list as published of the operator's license. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So ordered. Okay. Now, we can talk about the licenses and then. Okay, I would move to approve the, um, license renewals for class A permitted non-beverage and class A liquor as printed.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the list as published for, uh, class A liquor licenses. Uh, not even at all, it's been approved by the city clerk and the police chief. Uh, is there further discussion?
Kind of order?
Yes.
So, Eric, your motion stated class A, but we're approving as class A.
Yeah. I want to do all of them.
I thought you wanted to do each one and.
Do all of the liquor. Together.
Okay.
Yeah. Understood, because, right, when you said you wanted to do each category, that's a category.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I don't know, I mean. I think that motion, if with approval of my second.
I will approve the.
Class B permitted bump. Class B fermented malt beverage, class B liquor, and class B, B, class C wine. Motion has been amended. All those in favor of approving amended motion? All right, and now we have tobacco.
To approve the cigarette and tobacco licenses listed and publicly known.
Motion's made to, and seconded to approve tobacco licenses, any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, so ordered. Okay, item number four, exit interviews, you have a document.
Well, I think everyone was present when this was discussed at personnel. Um, but I would open it up to any questions or thoughts, um, changes to be made before it is turned into something that actually looks like a city document. This is very much just my chicken scratch, but I I would love any feedback or thoughts based off of what we have here. I guess for the public, we are, um, looking at establishing a process for exit interviews for our staff. Um, this would be all employees aside from our temporary and seasonal staff, staff who have been terminated and the library staff other than Heather, because the library staff does their own exit interview process, and we don't wanna interfere with how they're doing that, so. We're just looking at getting feedback from our staff as they're leaving to try to make sure that we're seeing if there are patterns that need to be addressed, what's going well, what can we be doing better as employers, so.
When we talked about it, we we just, we we know that you need to come up with, um, some terminology and some questions that are equal for everybody, so that you get the same kind of feedback, you know, you could, you could just do informal ones, but they don't really give you maybe the same, uh, range of feedback that you're looking for, so I think with with what we've put together, I think that we've got a pretty good working document to do that.
I agree.
So I don't know that we need to take any action, because it hasn't been turned into a formalized document. It's more just a chance for everyone to give feedback before we do that.
And take the temperature. I think I think it's an important thing, and the moment, um, that we treat our positions and everything else professionally, the easier it is to work with everything, because you're not dealing as much with emotion and not dealing with, uh, feelings and things like that, but I think this is a really good step.
So would it like just turned into like a policy that you can adopt, and then we put it with all of our other basically policies?
That that is my personal view, is that we should have something that's in writing that is standardized.
Since personnel committee discussed this and brought it up, uh, I would suggest that we turn it, return the information, if, you know, we can take a poll, let's see if everything is, everybody's basically in agreement, but I think we probably are. And turn it back to personnel, we come up with a finalized document that we can add to our
Okay.
operating procedures.
Okay, all right.
And and look for the the treasurer to provide us with the policies. I don't know if we need a motion, we might do, all right, and just give direction that this be returned to personnel policy for formal uh, consideration.
All right.
Okay, item number five is daycare task force appointments. And I don't have the list right here.
Well, I sent it back last week. Um, so this group of individuals is, um, they've all been working on the task force up until this point, um, so they will just be formally added. And most of them live within city limits, there are a couple individuals that live in the surrounding townships, but are also impacted, and we felt that it would be helpful to have a collaboration and, um, additional voices, so. And there's nothing in our ad hoc, um, policy that, or ordinance that says that we can't have people outside of city limits, so. Let me see if I can find.
Two, three, four, five names that you had in your email?
Not at this point, I'm still waiting to hear back from the business owners or business representatives.
I, it was just me, Rick and McHale.
Did you not include it in the packet?
I did not, cause.
Okay, and the people in the committee, they had hot.
And I can, I can tell you who each person is, um, so the council representative would be myself. Um, there would also be Paul Schaefer, who all of you know, um, Elizy Grakhovik, which she lives in town, she has young kiddos, she works at Clubhouse. Anna Hendrickson, uh, she grew up here, she has a teaching background, also has young kids. She has lived a lot of different places and has experienced, um, different ways that cities have addressed these issues. And then Elizabeth Anderson, um, she represents, uh, the townships outside of Amory that are going to be impacted, and she has a big philanthropical background and a lot of understanding of grant writing and things like that. So I feel we have a good mix of people that are very passionate about the project. We also have some business representatives that have been working with us, but did not want to be officially appointed. So we will continue to consult with them as.
Five, yes, yep. I will, those five people appointed to Anhot Committee, uh, on daycare task force, and as customary, when the council can either make a motion to approve or disprove those appointments.
Make motion to approve the appointments as proposed for the daycare task.
Oh, second.
Second, we approve those five folks as a daycare task force official appointments for the city. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, so ordered. Item number six, closed session, per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, police office, police department office manager, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee, only which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility. So we need a motion to go into a closed session. Are you ready? Okay, all right, we have, um, motion. I am. Move to, um, approve the the hire from Chief Dan for Rachel Wilson at thirty dollars an hour with, uh, um, level two, um, at at the level two for accrual of first PTL.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made seconded to approve Rachel Wilson as an advisor of aforementioned benefit lover. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, my real call?
Duncanson, Ben Summerin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Flannam, Manor.
Yes.
Motion is approved and congratulations to Rachel. Motion adjourned, is there a second? Signify by saying aye.